I'd like to call the meeting to order. For those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and let's lift the flag. If you would, Mr. Cameron, please.
Let's pray. Dear Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. And Lord, I just pray for this country, I pray for this city, and I pray for all that we do and all that we say, and I just pray for your favor and your direction in all that we do and say, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, and thank you everybody for being here tonight. Alrighty, first up is Mayor's announcement, appointments, and votes. Do have a proclamation for Meals on Wheels. Whereas March 2017 marks the 52nd anniversary of the amendment of the Older American Act signed into law on March 22nd, 1972 by President Richard Nixon, and whereas Meals on Wheels provides homebound seniors with nutritious meals, a friendly visit, and a safety check, and whereas volunteer meal deliverers may be one of the only people that seniors see during the course of their day, and Meals on Wheels plays a very important role in ensuring seniors can continue to live independently in their homes, and whereas the goal this month is to raise awareness of and request support for homebound seniors who depend on the services of Meals on Wheels providers, and whereas our city is proud to recognize the many contributions of Meals on Wheels and its volunteers to the community. Now therefore, I, Daniel Harder, Mayor of the City of Republic, Missouri, encourage all residents to take part in supporting this organization and do hereby proclaim March 2017 as Meals on Wheels Month. In testimony whereof, I have here and to set my hand and affixed a seal of the City of Republic this 21st day of March, AD 2017. And here to accept it is Michelle Henry from the Meals on Wheels program. Thank you for all that your organization does. The chief wants to get a picture here.
Thank you. I just want to say really quick, we've served 1,732 meals to homebound people in the month of February, and we absolutely could not do it without a wonderful kitchen staff and the volunteer drivers that do it. We have six that are hardcore dedicated to doing that, and we're always looking for more drivers.
More volunteers. Very good. And thank you very much for all you do. Oh, and another announcement. You have a birthday card. Ms. Connie Moller is having her birthday is March 31st. Connie, are you in there?
Yes.
Please come out Connie, and wave, we'll wave happy birthday to you. She's coming the long way around, or she's going the back way, I don't know for sure.
She just left the building.
Happy birthday Connie!
Smile at the camera.
Smile! And I had some more good news today. I did get an email today from the National Council from the Home Safety and Security. We have been, we are on the list of the top 50 safest cities in Missouri. We thought we did make the top 50 list this year. So I'd like to thank the staff for all they do, for helping us to maintain our safety here in town, especially Chief Lawton and Chief Compton for all the stuff that you guys do and all your staff, and I want to thank council support for the safety programs also. Over the years, over the last few years I've been on council, we did adopt the eight cent sales tax for fire equipment that we've been putting in service, so that supports our firefighters. We've also installed car cams, body cameras, we purchased rifles for the police department, new vehicles that came out of reserve. So thank you, council, and thank you staff for helping us make this one of the 50 safest cities in Missouri. I would also like to thank the Commonwealth for the recent article by James Hansen on Republic's pro-development movement, and a big thank to, thank you to Garrett Tyson and the staff for all the diligent work they did on this pro-development movement. The word is getting out that Republic's moving forward and we are open business, so thank you, Mr. Tyson, for all the work you guys have done. And with that, no public hearing on the citizen participation. Anyone here wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda, please step forward and give us your best three minutes. Anything not on the agenda. When you come forward, please sign your name.
I've already done that.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. My name is Linda Kelly. I own a home in Ward 1, Highland Meadows Edition, and I've been here in Republic for 13 years. I bought the house as new construction at 2833 East Marshall. I'm here to urge the city to develop housing codes. Without this, neighborhoods will lose their value. I've spoken and met with the city about this before. I know that a program was developed using a best practices framework from another like city during the last administration. I know because I received a copy of it. It wasn't implemented, and moreover, it wasn't openly discussed before the city or its citizens. I've personally been involved with co-development in other cities and would like to see what can be done to have a neighborhood that I'm proud to live in. I work hard to maintain my property and I would like to stay in my home, but to do so, I need the support of the city to sustain my home's value, not only its financial value, but my quality of life. For example, my almost new house is surrounded by household trash. Open garbage bins litter the street. Cars, trucks, and trailers are parked in yards or parked on the wrong direction in the street. My next-door neighbor mows his lawn only by city request. The hidden backyard weeds get over knee-high and trash gets thrown into it. It's disgusting, it's unhealthy, and breeds allergies, mold, and vermin. Another example, there was a utility trailer that sat parked on my street for over three months, loaded with household goods that included a freezer. I called the city several times, and it wasn't until a few weeks ago that it was moved. Current code mentions abandonment of airtight containers to be illegal, but apparently it couldn't get resolved because the trailer sat on the street. Can we just live with that? I don't want to. And yet another example, it took walking at night for me to understand that streetlight maintenance isn't done regularly. I found out that burned-out lights need to be called in by residents. I called for five, I called for five streetlights to be replaced in January within just a few blocks of my house, and I believe that one streetlight is directly in front of a council member's house. What does that say about my representation and safety in my neighborhood? A solution using neighborhood associations is a non-starter. From past experience, I know neighborhood associations only work when houses are occupied by owners or when distant owners are obligated by code to comply. My neighborhood continues to suffer from rentals. Buyers looking for rentals are encouraged when they see rundown neighborhoods. So, Republic, why not develop community participation with ongoing communication from its city officials? How about a city pride awareness program with prizes given to those who participate? Or a monthly coffee with the mayor and chief of police? How about working with Lowe's and Walmart and other contractors for discounts on mold products and cleanup? The citizens of Republic should know that a citywide cleanup commitment is coming. As a council, you're not here just to promote your own businesses or to draw a new business to town. It's simple. The city can't draw a new business here without visibly safe, clean neighborhoods and a good quality of life. My question is, have you taken a good look around your neighborhood lately? How do you think it looks? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And we will have, we have written down these issues that you brought up, and we will have a co-compliance officer come out and investigate your area, okay?
I get support from the co-compliance officers personally, but it's the codes that are the problem.
Okay.
Or a liability.
Hang on a second. And Mr. Brock, are you here, Mr. Brock? David. The lights, that's Empire, is that correct?
Correct.
Empire, so the reason we call, you call the city and let them know about the lights is we have to call the Empires because we don't, we don't maintain those, the streetlights. Okay, so.
I mean, I think the city should know, people in the city should know that it's up to them to call.
Okay. And one other thing I would like to bring up, and you'll see it in your newsletter, in your monthly newsletter coming out this next, next month, we are having a citywide cleanup in April. We hope that everybody participates in that. So please, there's going to be an insert in the newsletter, I believe, that's going to have all the information for that citywide cleanup. So please, everybody, everybody take advantage of that while it's here. And this is our first citywide cleanup we've ever done, so we are moving towards that direction, and we certainly appreciate you coming in and voicing your opinion.
It just needs to be ongoing.
Oh, yes. Well, this is our first one, this is our first go at it, and I don't doubt it's going to be very successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to address, Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, what I wanted to elaborate is, being a newcomer to the community, if I could establish one thing that was communicated to this council, for the community, there needed to be a concerted effort to clean up the community. So while we're working on the citywide cleanup, it is the first time for the city, I can assure you that it is an effort, it is an issue, because once we start this issue, it even further establishes for code enforcement to go to those areas. This is kind of a once-in-a-opportunity to allow people, work with different groups, with churches, different people to go out and assist, to help clean up those properties with Lowe's and different places. This has been done in other locations, but it is important. We do need to take pride in our community and clean it up, because the only thing about it is, we need to get out there and do that. There's another project that's coming up that we're working with the high school, they're cleaning up on the highways. And so I think we need to do a better job. We just had a meeting before this meeting talking about gateway signs to the community. We need to create our own branding, our own identity and things of that nature, but cleaning it up is one of them. And as I drive around town as well, it's very noteworthy that we need to clean it up. So thank you for your comments, and I think it goes along the line with the direction that we're taking with the city, so thank you.
I appreciate it.
And thank you again, Ms. Kelly. Anyone else wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda, please step forward and give us your best three minutes. Anything not on the agenda. Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries 6-0. On the board commissions and committee schedule, Board of Adjustments, April 6th, Capitol Improvement Committee, March 22nd, City Council Meeting, April 4th and the 18th, planning and zoning commission, April 10th. On the old business and table items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 17-11.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries 6-0.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator of the City of Republic, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation for direct loan and to execute a promissory note with the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation for the Heinz and Oakwood transportation improvements.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill Number 17-11.
Motion.
I have a motion, the second, and we have Mr. Brock with the overview.
Thank you, Mayor. As the time implies, this will finance the city's out-of-pocket expenses for our Heinz and Oakwood transportation improvements. The amount of the loan, the principal for loans, $669,779. This will be a 10-year note, 3% interest rate, 3.01. In addition to the city's out-of-pocket cost, the project also includes revenues, $75,000 from a developer contribution and $1.9 million in federal highway funds.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Any questions for Mr. Brock from council? No questions at all? Very good. Seeing no questions, roll call vote. Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Resher?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
On to new business. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill Number 17-12.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries 6-0.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Chapter 130, Republic City Code Municipal Court, Article 1, General Provisions, Section 130.040, Term of Office, by revising the date of appointment.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Derrickson.
Yes. With the recent change to Tuesday night meetings, that has thrown off the schedule for appointments that's set up in the ordinance for judges. Judges are appointed for a two-year term at the, every even year, and so usually when we were meeting the second and third, or second and fourth Monday, we would be past the April election, and the incoming mayor could make the appointment at that first meeting. With the change to Tuesday night meeting, that has thrown that off, so this amendment is to adjust that so that the appointment is still at the first meeting after the individuals take office, and, but it gives it flexibility so that we're not tied to the specific dates that were in the ordinance originally.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Derrickson on this particular bill? For housekeeping?
Yep.
Very good. No questions? This is the first read. If you do have any questions, please direct those to Mr. Derrickson. I need a motion, the second, for the first reading of Bill Number 17-13.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion carries 6-0.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Chapter 520, Fences and Walls of the City of Republic's Municipal Code of Ordinances, in order to correct errors and to clarify certain requirements therein.
Thank you, Brenda, and welcome, Mr. Tyson.
Thank you. The City of Republic began regulating the construction of fences in 2009. I began working here about a year and a half before that only, but to my knowledge, fences were not an existential threat to our community. After we adopted these regulations, however, we have spent a tremendous amount of staff time and have imposed quite a bit of cost on the community as well to regulate something that was not a huge issue. As the saying goes, trying to kill an ant with a sledgehammer. So this bill is designed to scale that back a bit, for staff to not be spending as much time regulating something that tends not to be a major threat to the community, and also to preserve some more reasonableness, if I can say it that way, to these regulations. So to run down the list of what this does, if you're going to replace a lawfully existing fence that already conforms with our regulations, please just replace it. No need for a permit, and this, so this bill will remove the requirement for you to come and pay us $50 just to confirm that, yeah, your fence is still fine and it's just like everybody else's. No need for that. It will remove some defined terms that are not actually used in those regulations. It will clarify what's required when you want to build a fence that's in excess of six feet. As it is currently, you would have to go get a structural engineer to design the construction of that fence, of that fence, because wind loads can be a problem. But the wind loads are what they are, and the design is the same every time, so we're just going to provide some specifications rather than making each person that wants to do this go and hire a structural engineer to come up with the same thing. It will also clarify the location of fences with regard to water meters and public sidewalks to make sure that the water meters stay accessible and that fences are not located any closer than 12 inches to a public sidewalk. And then lastly, it will codify something that we've been practicing for a long time now informally, which is to require people to install access gates if they are going to completely cut off a portion of their private property by the installation of a fence. If you put in a fence and then leave some of your property then inaccessible to you, the only way to access that portion, to maintain that area, is to trespass on somebody else's property. So in order to prevent that situation, we will be requiring an access gate. It's not been required before, and in those instances where we weren't able to persuade them to install the gate, what we end up with usually are nuisance issues on the other side of that fence because it's inaccessible to mow and to maintain.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. I do have, I do have a question on the gate requirement. So now you're going to require an access gate where you can get in there, but if they lock the access gate, we're back to square one.
Sure, it's, well, it's only meant for them to utilize. It would not be utilized by anyone other than them.
Okay.
So if they want to lock it, that's perfectly fine for security or safety reasons, as long as they have some reasonable method of accessing whatever they have cut off from themselves.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? Raise your hand and be recognized. Did notice that on the back of the Exhibit A, front yard and front half is 48 inches tall, commercial is 12 feet, rear yard and rear half, the side yard is an eight feet tall fence and 12 feet of commercial, correct?
That's correct, and that's not being changed.
That's not changed.
That is how the regulations have been since 2009.
Right. Another housekeeping issue, and thank you for catching, catching that. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? This is the first read. If you do hear any questions out in the public, please bring those forth to Mr. Tyson and we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. I'm going to get caught up here with my marking. I need a motion, the second, for the first reading of Bill Number 17-14.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri, Chapter 215, Article 5, Offenses Concerning Public Peace, by enacting new sections 215.282.1 through 215.282.12, which shall be known as the Noise Control Code.
Thank you, Brenda. And Mr. Cameron, you're building this one.
Thank you. As you recall, back in July upon my arrival, one of the issues that I was asked to look into or to address was to look at the city's nuisance ordinance related to noise issues or complaints around the community, and so based upon that time, we worked on an ordinance, the staff and myself, kind of looking at it, admittedly looking at the ordinance that was on the books, it was a bit, I'd say it's vague even though it's a state statute, it's based upon state statutes, almost identical, in fact it is. And so adding some more clarity to that specific ordinance was kind of the objective, and so between Garrett, myself, Jared, the police chief, we worked on different forms of language trying to craft a new ordinance in and of itself. Admittedly, getting involved in that ordinance was extremely complicated, making sure that you're staying in line with the First Amendment rights and things of that nature, the things that we discussed in the work session in and of itself. And so in January, this council authorized myself to engage a law firm out of Kansas City, Stinson Leonard, to evaluate this and draft for us an ordinance that was consistent or at least compatible with other communities that had faced similar situations. And so what is before you and what has been presented and what staff is recommending for your consideration is this ordinance that has been drafted with their input. And so again, one thing that I want to also communicate is, in front of you, inside attachment apps, as I promised, there are all the, all the emails or communications that we would receive or suggested edits that were received will be provided to the council. There's also an additional supplement that is not inside that packet that is, that is for your review as well that can be considered in this reading or even in the second reading in two weeks. But anyway, that is, I'll entertain any questions, but really, it's kind of falling in line with the presentation I made a couple of weeks ago, what you've had, but again, this is basically the result of the product that the outside council provided to the staff, to the council. So I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Councils, if you have any questions for Mr. Cameron, please raise your hand and be Councilmember Jones.
Dave, could you go into detail about enforcement or what constitutes a violation? Because I know there's multiple levels that have to be achieved, so could you go into that, George?
What would constitute a violation? I mean, I could speak to like, I'd probably have to delve into what the enforcement side would be, but it'd be kind of like you'd have to consider the same situation with the, with any enforcement situation, what the code enforcement or the police officers deal with at this stage. I mean, I think it'd be, you'd go out, evaluate it, look at the scenario, investigate situations and decide whether or not a violation's been incurred, or if it's a recurring violation. I mean, it's like in the situations that we have now, and not every time we issue a citation, sometimes we issue a warning, and that would be the protocol in the same situation. You'd go out there, if it's a reoccurring situation, that you got the same thing over and over again, similar to this lady that spoke tonight. If it's not gone by tomorrow and it's there the next day, you keep asking, you could issue only so many warnings before you need to go to the enforcement level. Enforcement's probably your last, your last line of action.
Right. But I'm talking specifically about, so just looking at sections, let's see, Section C under 215, 282.4. Let's move it back to A. But C, talking about the measured at least more than five decibels above ambient noise, that, I'm a little confused about that with regard to how that applies to the decibel table in Section A. So there's ways of explaining it in the workshop, the way I understand it, is that in order for it to be classified as a violation, it had to be higher than the table, but also at least more than five decibels over the ambient noise, but the ambient noise is already over the level in the table, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Not sure that's clear as far as, I mean, it became more clear as it was described at workshop, but I don't know that it's clear in the ordinance, or maybe I'm just really stoned. Move it a little better. Also, we're talking, the table in Section A, having done some research on different decibel levels set in towns that are similar in size to Republic, find them to be, they're not all over the board, but these are significantly lower than some. Johnson City, Johnson City, Tennessee, daytime decibel level is 75, in residential area, residential is, you've got 60.
Mr. Aaron?
Yes, sir.
And Councilmember Jones, what I would say is, even in that, like what we provided, and even as I mentioned in the work session, it was a range, and it is still subject to this council and any adjustments to those, so what we provided is what our council provided to us, provided to that, because it could range from any one of those. So it is subject to this council amending those numbers, and I, and certainly, that's up to the council's pleasure to entertain an amendment to those, to those decimal readings as well, because those are some of the comments that I know that, that I received. I want to say it was Brian. Yeah, from Mr. Penny, sorry. That was included in this packet as well.
That answer your questions? You have no more, Mr. Captain?
Don't have any more questions. Now with regard to the proposed additions, those are the amendments that would, any of those would require a motion to amend, to add any of those.
Yeah, so that there would, what would be needed is a motion to amend. Yeah, so what would be needed is a motion to amend the, I'm sorry.
Could I jump in there?
Yeah.
I think you've probably seen the past, a lot of times I'll prepare a memo. If a council member is considering asking for an amendment to a proposed ordinance, I will, if you will contact me, I will prepare that amendment so that it's in the packet at the next meeting so that it can be made. And if we get enough amendments pursuant to our charter, it says that if there are substantial amendments, then a matter gets bumped over at least one meeting after those amendments. And we also have a procedure for doing a substitute council bill if there are a lot of amendments. Maybe they're not substantial, but because of the number, we might want to do a clean version of that with those amendments in it. So it just depends on how many there are. It may be a simple one-page memo, or it could be a substitute council bill that addresses several changes subsequently. Whatever council's pleasure is, I'll be happy to work with you on any proposed amendments.
So just to make sure I'm clear on it, any of the proposed considerations that have been submitted from anyone from this packet, those need to be done in a formal manner.
I think it would be fast because I think a council member needs to, well, a council member's going to have to make the motion to amend it. So if we got five council members that want to tweak it here, I'd have five memos here with each one unproposed, and you just go down the line, either voting to approve them or not approve them. And then as amended, that's what council would then vote on at the second reading.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, kind of. So those amendments could be made between now and the second reading?
Yes, if someone, if you want to make an amendment, just let me know and I'll type it up, let you look at it, make sure I'm understanding what you want.
So anything tonight, you wouldn't necessarily?
If you just had a minor one, you could, but if you had major changes, I'd propose doing it by a memo so that you track it well.
So it's your call if you'd like to make that amendment?
Yeah, if it's a major.
Or if you'd like to publish it then?
Well, there's, you know, I've got a, what would be considered a, probably a relatively minor amendment in adding some verbiage that just call for traceability to NIST searches. Very common with any equipment that deals with calibration, so I'd consider that a minor.
Is that the one you had in your email?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that. We could do it tonight, or I could prepare a memo pointing out, it was in four or five sections, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, and just identify those in a memo and present that at the next council meeting.
That's fine. The other one would be not quite so insignificant if we did decide to go with the decibel levels, because I just, these levels are far too low, it's far from what I can consider. So I will make that formal.
Now on that, all you'd be doing is just basically setting different decimal limits of those six categories there? You'd just be proposing, okay? That should be simple enough, putting a memo.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I am.
Very good, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Cameron? Please raise your hand and be recognized.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cameron.
Time adjustments would need to be the same way. If there's changes in times, that would need to be adjusted as well.
Say more to that, what do you mean time adjustments?
Well, there's.
Seven AM, nine BM.
Yes.
And nine PM, seven AM.
Oh, if somebody wanted to tweak those, it would be done.
Yes, I mean, that'd be the same thing, because that was one of the considerations that's in the comments as well.
There you go. Back to my page here. There's no other questions or comments for Mr. Cameron. This is the first read. If you have any other questions, please direct them to Mr. Cameron. And again, if you have any changes you would like to make, amendments, please get those in memo form to Mr. Derrickson.
Yep.
On to other business. Resolution number 17-R-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the Police Department to apply for two reimbursable 2017-2018 Missouri Highway Safety Program for Traffic Safety Grants. You have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Chief Locke.
Good evening. I'll make it as quick. I know we've got a longer agenda here. These two grants that we'd be applying for this year are through the Missouri Highway Safety Program Grants. We would be applying for the time period of 2017-2018. We did apply for these same grants last year and received them, not the full amount we applied for, but we did receive them the previous year to that. So the 2015-2016 year, we did not apply or we were not approved, but prior to that, we did. So I want to kind of explain the process here that we want to get into a regular routine of applying for these two grants. They're focused on traffic safety and DWI and sobriety checkpoints. That's a focus that we want to do moving forward. We're asking the state for a $7,000 grant related to hazardous driving enforcement, and that's specifically a random patrol by officers on overtime salary where they focus on nothing but traffic hazard, hazardous movements of vehicles. And then the second one is sobriety checkpoints and DWI enforcement, which we kind of talked about last time, our involvement in the DWI task force. This would provide funds, $12,000, over the next year for us to be able to send officers to other DWI checkpoints as well as run our own DWI checkpoints. So we're asking for approval from the council to apply for these two grants, a total of $19,000. I just want to say right up front, I do not expect to get that full amount when we apply. In the last two years, well, the full year of 2014-15, we spent just over $7,000 in DWI grant money and another $3,000 in the hazardous moving. So, you know, I doubt they're going to give us the seven and 12, but they'll certainly, I believe, give us some. And I'm open to any questions at all that you have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Locke? We had a lot of comments, by the way, on that traffic monitor, traffic monitor for speed.
Oh, good.
A lot of good comments on that.
Good, yeah, I think it's been successful and we're going to try and expand that in the future.
Any questions on this particular resolution for Chief Locke? Saying that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six zero. I would like to thank you again, we said this earlier, but I would like to thank you guys again for keeping the safety in forefront here. That's what helps makes this other one of the top 50 safest cities in the city of Kansas City.
Thank you. I do want to remind Brenda that unfortunately, due to the timeframe to this, we need to get the paperwork signed for this grant tonight by all the council members. So if I could just make sure that Brenda gets ahold of you before you leave, I appreciate it.
Oh, that's going to cost.
Thank you much. Whatever the price, I'll pay it.
Counselmember, take a round after the meeting. All right. Resolution number 17-R-22, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, awarding a bid for residential water meters and associated electronic radio transmitters. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
So I can, I got a motion and a second. Welcome back, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a sealed bid process for water meters expected to be bought for the upcoming year. Solicited three vendors, received two bids, and are asking to split the award so as to allow award to the lowest, low bid in each case. For the Hershey Bronze Meter, awarded to Springfield Wind Water, unit price of $94.81. And for the Itron 100W Ert, that's the electronic radio transmitting device, awarded to Midwest Meter, unit price of $80 apiece. With the money we have budgeted and available, then we would expect to be able to provide meters for approximately 107 new single-family or duplexes, 40 expected dead meters, and then really the primary purpose for the bulk purchase here, do 441 old meter replacements. Purchase of the electronic radio transmitters would be done immediately. The water meters, however, would be spread out over the course of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. And these are, well, we currently use these meters and units. Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Brock, Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cameron.
I'm going to ask you, David, sorry, because you know, me and the electronic meters just. So what, how long are these things lasting? I mean, are we getting 10 years out of them on the remote reads?
It's hard to say because we've changed models. We've got 60W units out there that are probably approaching seven or eight years. That's really the oldest we have in the inventory. They, we are still turning in 60W and getting warranty replacements. They've got a pro rate replacement, I think after seven years, you get a 50% discount off of a 100W.
I'm with you. I'll just keep asking you what the rate of return on them bad boys are. But what is our water loss? That's the second question. How much are we losing in water loss?
I think for 2016, we came in about 18%, 19%. And a significant portion of that, we think, are old meters that are reading slow and under-recording the actual usage that are out there. And that's what makes our meter replacements so important, because that's, it's lost revenue. It's lost water, but it's really lost revenues.
Any other questions for Mr. Brock? Saying that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? And that motion carries six zero. On to resolution number 17-R-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, awarding the bid for the production of a fireworks show at the City of Republic's 21st Annual Have a Blast Patriotic Celebration scheduled for June 30th, 2017 at J.R. Martin Park. I need a motion and a second.
Motion, second.
I have a motion, second. Welcome, Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
We recently concluded the sealed bid process for the fireworks display at 2017 Have a Blast Patriotic Celebration scheduled for Friday, June 30th. For this particular bid process, the companies were provided with a few specifications and our budgeted amount for fireworks when they received the invitation for bid document. And then were asked to provide us with a proposal meeting those specifications and that dollar amount. The budgeted amount in 2017 for fireworks is $16,000. I did send this out to three companies. We received two proposals. One from AM Pyrotechnics out of Buffalo, Missouri, and one from Premier Pyrotechnics out of Richland, Missouri. And then one of the biggest factors to consider when comparing these two proposals that we did receive, which should be on your document that you have, is shell count and shell size. Those two things make your show bigger and better depending on the size of the shell and how many you have in the show. I did calculate the total number of shells and shell size for both proposals, and you can see those there. Looking at that table, AM Pyrotechnics did far exceed Premier Pyrotechnics in number of shells and the higher inch shells, which are your better shells for the show. They also, AM Pyrotechnics, plans to introduce seven-inch shells to the show this year, which is something new. We've never had shells that big in our fireworks display. Total shell count, AM Pyrotechnics is 1,826, Premier Pyrotechnics 1,159. And then the total cost for the fireworks display from both companies is also on this document here. AM Pyrotechnics submitted a proposal with total cost of $15,857.39. They did note on their submittal that that show is actually valued at over $17,000, so they discounted a little bit for us. And then Premier Pyrotechnics came in at $16,015.27, and they did put $16,000 on their bid submittal, so I assume they're, we're planning to take off that $15 there for us. In consideration of these proposals received and previous work history, I would recommend that AM Pyrotechnics be awarded the bid for the fireworks display for the 2017 Have a Blast Patriotic Celebration. We've worked with AM Pyrotechnics for approximately eight years. I worked alongside Aaron, who was with AM Pyrotechnics last year. He's great to work with. He made a lot of last-minute adjustments and changes for us when we had new ideas and bigger things that we wanted to do. So I would recommend that we move in that direction with AM Pyrotechnics.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. You said again, AM Pyrotechnics did this last year?
Yes.
Is this going to, excuse me, be actually more shells than it did last year? Do you have that comparison, you remember?
I don't, but we did increase our budget by $1,000, I believe, this year, so I think they've thrown in a little more.
That was your first event you attended, wasn't it?
I thought they did an outstanding job.
Yeah, they did great.
That was just for me.
It was, it was pretty, I've already been asked, I've already been asked who's going to do, what band is going to be there again? I've been asked that already.
Members only.
So I know you guys are members only again.
Right on.
Very good. We'll get that advertised. Any questions for Ms. Mayfield? Do we need to put that in the resolution?
The wig on.
Yes.
For AM Pyrotechnics.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to make that.
Make a motion to amend that by inserting AM Pyrotechnics.
So I would need a motion to amend this resolution to add AM Pyrotechnics to this resolution?
Motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor for the motion of adding AM Pyrotechnics? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. Any more discussion? Any more questions for, don't run off. Any more discussion points for Ms. Mayfield watching there? Don't let her get away that easy.
Getting out of here, no kidding.
See, I think you said that your favorite last year was the large bore multi-shot with the angle fire red peony, wasn't it? You said that was your favorite?
I just dug the people jumping on airplane, the flag attached to it.
There's no other questions?
I wouldn't.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. On to resolution number 17-R-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing payment to Missouri Rural Services Workers Compensation Insurance Trust for coverage for 2017-2018. I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The city's workers' compensation insurance policy does expire March 31st. The renewal policy period is April 1st. The new policy period will be April 1st, 2017 through March 31st of 2018. Steve Whiteman from Arthur J. Gallagher, who is our broker representative, has been gracious enough to join us this evening. He's going to give a brief overview regarding the bids that were received. He's also going to explain that our premium is actually lower this year than it was last year. And then he'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
So I'm one of the brokers for the city, and this is specifically regarding the workers' compensation insurance. Our company, we did go out to bid for the City Republic, and we got about six bids. Your current carrier is Missouri Rural Services, and they did a fantastic job as far as the premium that they provided on their bid. We went to, the renewal premium for Missouri Rural is about $166,000. The next closest bid was $231, and then it went up from there. We got a couple of people that just declined coverage, just didn't quite fit in their wheelhouse. But it's always great to market the city. Your attention to loss control is definitely noted by the carriers that we get to quote from. One thing I did want to say that's not in just regards to premium is the claims year-over-year. So on average, you do about $85,000, it's over a five-year span, but you do about $85,000 worth of losses year-over-year. This last year, it's been about $8,000, so that's incredible. So hats off to your employees and your department heads and things, so congratulations. That year, having it so low, that's going to financially benefit the city for years, so congratulations there. So again, we are recommending that you move forward with the quote from Missouri Rural. They've been a good partner for y'all. And again, as we went to the marketplace, that's our, that would be our recommendation. Anyone have any questions?
Question. Yes, Ms. Mayfield, sell. So with that banner year of low losses, are experience amounts still changed from 1.0 to 1.04?
It did. So when they take into effect- It did. So when they take into...they take into effect five years. So your five-year total losses is still just slightly higher than last year, but you have a bad year...it's gonna roll off, so unfortunately, 2014 wasn't a great year. Um, so you just have to wait a few years for that to, to lower. I do expect next year, four-year mod to go down below, below a one.
What is our deductible?
Uh, there's no deductible.
No deductible?
Yep, great question, though.
Keep going, Councilwoman Self.
Hold on.
You got the floor. You go, 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 go.
So how many...how many companies do you represent as far as...are in the brokerage, right?
Right.
So how many are in that house?
So we marketed to six.
I know you said six, but like, is there...was that the only six that...
That's the top player. So we specialize in public sector, so that's all I do. All I do is cities and schools. Um, so we actually, when...we have people coming to us asking to bid your insurance. We, of course, go to our, uh, people that we trust. So we have our own group of people, you know, they have to meet certain criteria to make sure that they, you know, can adequately supply the, the correct insurances and things. But no, we went out...this six would cover a, a good gamut of everyone. So, uh, Missouri Rural is a, what we call a trust, or it's an insurance pool, so you share risk. We're big advocates of that Midwest public risk. Uh, they actually have your liability and property lines. They're another pool, so their comp...their work comp is just not quite as competitive. MEM, um, that is a company, they are, um, just an insurance company, not a...
The one that has our general liability and stuff? Would they have given us a discount on that if we had brought the work comp over?
Uh, that's including the discount, so that you do get a 10% discount, yes. But the $231, that does take into effect the discount. Great question, also.
It's like you're in the business.
You go.
Yeah.
You're...you're going fine.
What's your day job?
Uh, I think it might be a typo, but, um, says that the policy expires on March 31st, and then our renewal is April 1st. Shouldn't those renewal and expiration be the same date?
It, it should, yes. April 1st is the...is your exact date.
Right. Just wanna make sure. Don't want a day out there with no...
Oh, absolutely. No, that'd be bad.
Yep, so that's all I have. That's all I've got. Wasn't that many pages?
We, we can come back to you. Just keep, keep going through there. Any other questions from Council? And, and thank you, Mr. Self. Those are very good questions. Thank you very much. Anything else from Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, hang on. I will do for...with staff is with Connie and her Safety Committee team. She's the head of that. I would commend Connie Muller on the work that she does. And trust me, I...it's non-stop and it's routine that I get a, an email from her with their inspections, their investigations, their walkthroughs, and with your help, going through our facilities, looking for, uh, areas of opportunity. And then, uh, I get to help draft a letter to say, "We need to address those areas of opportunity." But I appreciate the fact that Connie's on top of this, and, uh, and she takes it very seriously. She does an outstanding job, and, uh, it's not necessarily...how that landed in her purview, uh, and on top of having to deal with me every day, that's pretty an outstanding job. So I want to commend Connie and her team for, for getting that done, so...
I agree. Kind of a lot of attention detail.
Councilwoman Self.
That does bring up a good question. So is there anything that we're missing that we could get additional discounts on?
No, really, I mean, not from a premium standpoint. Um, your first dollar, so it really doesn't do much if you had, let's just say, you took on the first $50,000 retention, something like that. Uh, there's additional cost savings, but for the city this size, we think it makes, you know, a, a big difference, um, really just loss control. So however much input you put out on loss control, that's gonna make sure that your premium decreases year-over-year. That, from a financial standpoint, keeping your losses low, that's another one thing you can do. And of course, it's safety for your employees, and it makes for a, you know, a good...just good city overall.
What's the...it had a bunch of...what's the actual covered amount?
Uh, for the work comp? So it's statutory, so there is no limit.
No limit?
Yep, it's just...
All right.
Yeah, it can go as high as it needs to be.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for...it was Whiteman, is that correct?
Whiteman, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. White or Ms. Addington? She disappeared. Any other questions, Council? Thank you much. Uh, seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries, 6-0. On to resolution number 17-R-25, a resolution the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving a policy concerning the public-private economic development partnerships for infrastructure construction. I need a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Welcome back, Mr. Tyson.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize for what may have been some curt and facetious remarks about our fence regulations earlier. I should have disclosed that I wrote those. So all snide remarks aren't directed toward myself. Just wanted to be clear about that. Uh, this resolution proposes a policy to guide staff and to guide procedure when it comes to establishing public-private partnerships for economic development, particularly those partnerships that involve, uh, the expenditure of city resources for infrastructure in order to facilitate more development, more physical development here in the city. The council's recent, uh, engagement in this sort of thing with the Garden Business Park is a good example, and in fact, uh, the process we went through to bring that to council has sort of served as a template for this policy that we're bringing you here this evening. Uh, that process that we followed there, in addition to some review of other municipalities' economic development policies and procedures, have informed what is before you right now. Uh, what it does is it gives staff a track to run on in terms of how to negotiate, uh, those potential partnerships and what steps to follow in terms of making sure that council is aware and appropriately involved in those negotiations and in making those decisions. Uh, I believe it adds a, a measure of accountability that I think is very appropriate when we're talking about, uh, the expenditure of substantial city resources. I also believe it contributes, uh, very appropriately to requiring transparency from staff, both to the council and to the community. Uh, so you can see, and I won't spend a lot of time going through here, uh, what all is required, but it's basically a, a due diligence process on the part of, of staff and council, uh, just to make sure that we are doing our homework and that we're being held accountable to do our homework, to make sure that, uh, these sort of partnerships are actually going to have a high probability of ending up in the best interest of the community. Uh, so, uh, the, the one additional comment that I will make is... This is now the second council meeting, I think, in a row where I've brought a new policy for, uh, council to consider for approval by resolution. And so it always is a concern, and it's been a concern of mine in, in drafting this and presenting it, is...the question is, is this red tape, is this going to put up boundaries that are too restrictive? Uh, it's something I am concerned about. I would say this, this registers just a little bit on the, uh, red tape Richter scale, so to speak. Uh, but I think these boundaries are very healthy, very appropriate, and, uh, I, I do think when you have a situation like we had with Garden Business Park where you're doing the right thing and, uh, and it...the procedure's working well and it ends well, and you know that you may be in that situation perhaps again and again over the next several years, that it's good to go ahead and institutionalize that procedure and set up some of those boundaries formally by adopting a policy like this.
And this is...will be well received. I just might misimagine. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? No questions, though.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got a comment. Um, ideally, we'd love to have had this in place probably before we did the Garden Business Park project and probably before we did Heart of America and things of that nature. So I appreciate the work, again, that, that Garrett is doing, and again, back to your pro-development article that recently came out. I think we're making a concerted effort to do these things, but I think that it's... we gotta be very cautious, and I think Garrett is doing a good job of helping myself and the council with, with the process for the best way to get that done, 'cause everyone can come out and say, "Hey, we want the same deal." And not every one of those deals is gonna be in the best interest of the City of Republic and for the growth and development of it. So I think having a vetting process, something like this, that you're a part of, that you're still getting to see the return on investment, how it benefits the community, is an ideal way and a, a part of building, even part of our mission, vision, and values and establishing trust with just knowing accountable with the community. So I commend you again on another great job of putting together a document. It works, so... If all of it's not red tape and we miss some opportunity, then I'll blame you for it.
I have no doubt.
Keep that off in a minute.
I think you can do that from a...you gotta run the tape batteries, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Again, any questions for Mr. Tyson? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tyson. On to resolution number 17-R-26, a resolution the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, awarding a bid for the 2017 citywide cleanup and authorizing the execution of a contract agreement. I need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Welcome back, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, April 22nd, we have a citywide cleanup planned. The, the primary feature of that event is a curb site collection of bulk waste and white goods. Uh, also that day, we'll have, uh, e-waste collection site, recycling, uh, collection event at Miller Park, our yard waste disposal site, and availability for disposal of household hazardous waste at the Springfield Collection Center. For the curb site collection, we solicited bids from, uh, all the trash contractors that we could locate in the area. That was, uh, 12, uh, 12 potential contractors. However, we received only one bid, and that bid was from Allied Services LLC, doing business as Republic Services of the Ozarks. The bid format, uh, we had a unit price for, uh, per ton for bulk waste collected at the curb. Uh, we had, uh, tipping fees for a secondary collection, a second round-up if we need to pick up sites that were mixed. Uh, that was a unit price per cubic yard. And then we also had a flat fee mobilization cost by the contractor to, uh, recover their labor and equipment startup costs. Uh, the estimated price using, uh, our low bidder, Republic Services, for the event, for the curb site collection, $15,520. That is a, a bid over our budget est...our budget number. We have $10,000 budgeted. Uh, this is the first event that we're having this year, so no one really had a track record on, uh, what to expect. Uh, we do think that we can find the additional, uh, $5,0520 in the general fund budget over the course of the year if necessary.
Street budget.
Just saying. Very good. And, uh, this is the flyer that's gonna be in the newsletter, is that correct?
It is. Uh, you can have a flyer here. Uh, this is one of the several, uh, public relation efforts that'll be going out. Uh, Chris Snyder with Republic Services is also here tonight. If anyone have any...has any specific questions on the operation?
I did, I did have, uh, one question from a citizen when I was talking about this. Um, uh, do you have shredding services? I mean, that was one question he asked, was shredding.
We have a paper bid at, uh, Miller Park. However, it won't be shredded until it is transported back to market.
Okay, so, so it won't be shredded after the, the collection, right? Uh, your name was, yes, sir?
Chris Snyder, Republic Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Chris, so doing this a number of times, historically, the first week, everybody would get it out there, and somebody says, "Oops, I didn't know." They put it out there and said, "Oh, yep, I put it out there. You just missed it." Is there...is included in your fee, is there a...is there another...is there any additional provision for that? Cause it got...and that...trust, I've done this so many times where you can go, "It was out there, you just missed it."
You're very correct. Um, we handle many municipalities in the area, and we've done many cleanups. We do the curb side cleanup, NIXA, Ozark. Um, so it kinda...we know how...what it takes and...
So that's included in this?
Yep.
Okay.
That's in...the, uh, there's an additional cost for if we go back and pick somebody up. That's included in the bid there. Um, that has that pricing in there. We, uh, when we plan these events, we have...we do have a little bit of leakage that comes over that somebody puts out towards the end of the day, thinking it's their normal trash time, uh, that we will rebid. But when we do this, we bring...we'll be bringing 12 trucks here. We'll have 20 to 30 employees, uh, generally around two people per truck, as well as what we'll do is, um, we'll have supervisors running the streets, looking for those issues where somebody sets it out behind the truck, so we can come back and pick it up that day. We want to get your city cleaned by the end of the day, and we want it to look nice at the end of the day and not have any...anything holding over on the weekend. So we'll work hard and diligently to make sure that everything is picked up and cleaned up by the end of the day, and, uh, there could be a few, hopefully not, but there might be a few, but we work...
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Any questions for, uh, David Brock or Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Self.
Um, I see you're talking about the event flyer, but like, do you plan on putting that in the water bill? Or like, like, where are you gonna...
I'll defer to our PR expert, Ms. Connie Muller. His birthday happens to be March 31st. He's taken the long way around again, so...
I think we need to get banners, so...
For a birthday?
No.
Oh, God.
We can do that, too.
You asked about whether this was going out in the utility, but I will be copying. We start it tomorrow morning, so they'll be ready for, to go out with it.
So we'll go out with this...in the newsletter?
Is there anything else we're doing for it?
Uh-huh. We're gonna be doing social media. We'll be doing press releases. Uh, we'll be contacting, hopefully, the school and see if they can submit out in the time as well. Uh, we'll also send out to the chamber, uh, but this will not be helpful to us for businesses. Uh, hopefully, they can provide the rest.
And then we've got some targeted outreach for folks with, uh, associated with our TV, our code for...
Code, code to blind. We'll be sending letters to them as well.
It's not like a well-thought-out process, and man, thanks for putting your time in on that and thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's gonna be a big thing. Any other questions for Ms. Muller or Mr. Snyder or Mr. Brock? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? And that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brock. On to resolution number 17-27, a resolution the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, to approve the purchase of one new police patrol vehicles. I need a motion and a second?
Motion.
I have that motion and a second. Did I hear the second, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wilson, thank you. My motion is second. Chief Law, welcome back.
I, uh, usually I like to be in front of the council. This is one I don't like to be in front of the council with, but it is a realization of our job. Uh, back on January 26th, uh, one of our 2016 Ford Explorer utility vehicles was involved in a collision after a pursuit from Republic into the City of Springfield, actually out of the I-44 Glenstone area. Uh, at the end of that pursuit, uh, the suspect vehicle crashed and spun around and, uh, hit our, uh, 2016 Ford Explorer head-on. Luckily, no serious injuries from the collision, um, but obviously, it did some significant damage to our car, and in fact, after two months of working with the insurance company and all, um, it is totaled. So, um, we are in a bind, and so we put this on last...it's last on the council for a reason. Um, we got an opportunity, however, uh, to have a local, uh, Republic Ford had a Ford utility, same as we've been ordering in previous years, in stock on the lot, um, and at, uh, below the state bid price, um, so we decided to move quickly. I will admit to you, we do not have all the answers for you. The insurance claim has not been finalized yet, so we don't have...we do not know what we will be getting on that 2016 Ford Explorer. It had 23,000 miles when it was, uh, totaled. Um, but my anticipation is at least over 20,000. I'm hoping. I'm sure it's gonna be over 20,000. My intent here, we, we need to have patrol vehicles. That's critical to our operation. So my intent is to, uh, get approval tonight from the council to move forward on the purchase of this in-stock vehicle. It's onsite now. We will work with the insurance company, and whatever the difference between the insurance company payoff and the cost of the vehicle, which was 28...uh, $27,801, uh, we will make up in our either general fund budget or through our reserve account. Uh, in addition, just so it's clear, we will be moving equipment from the old crashed vehicle, taking it out, a labor cost to remove it from that vehicle, and then a labor cost to install it, but I don't anticipate any significant increases in new equipment to do that. There may be a few minor pieces that got damaged in the collision. So I'm anticipating the entire cost to be under or at or below $31,000. Um, obviously, I don't have the exact numbers for you here tonight 'cause the insurance company hasn't finalized the payoff yet. And I'll happily answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Chief Law? Councilwoman Self.
All right. Uh, you did a good job. Um, I will say...
Uh-oh.
Have you been handling the claim? Or like, have you...
No, I don't. I do not handle the claim, no. But I, I...if I can answer...I do have...uh, we did go out, uh, and get estimates on it, um, and so we went out three, and we only got two back. out three and we only got two back. And I'll be honest with you, they varied between, there was one just under 10,000 and the other one was about 16, over 16,000. And so we went back to the 10,000 one thinking, wow, and unfortunately, they failed to include some heavy duty items like airbags, like an entire airbag system in the car was gone. So they didn't include that in their bid.
So it may not be total?
It was. So after all of that, we went through that, the insurance company actually sent an adjuster out to look at it and make the determination whether to total it or not, and they have made that determination.
So sometimes, there are some provisions that allow you to get a new car replacement, being that it was a '16, right?
2016.
The problem is, I think the mileage may be too much, but that's a question worth asking, so...
We have our finest on that. Connie Moller with the city. And trust me, she's probably tired of hearing from me because I call her every day and send an email every day about it to try and get this thing nailed down, because we wanted to take advantage of the opportunity of an onsite vehicle. The alternative would be to wait, order one, and it could be three or four months out.
Do we insure that additional equipment on there, or is that just...
I've talked with Connie about that. So no, the claim is for the value of the vehicle. To be frank with you, there's no, I don't know that there's a reason to, I guess if the equipment was damaged, we might argue that point, but most of the equipment's interior and other than, there may be some damage to a siren that's mounted in the front end where the collision occurred, but I'm not, that's the least of my worries.
Sure, sure.
So we insure it for the 27,000...
26,000?
26, 27,000.
I just wouldn't want insult to injury, 27 plus eight, you know, so...
No, because I mean, to be frank with you, the equipment can be used. There is a labor cost to take it out. Now, we just put it in last year, last summer. To be honest with you, I wish it was one of our older cars, but it wasn't. So that's the reality of our business.
Thank you, Councilor Self. Any other questions? Councilor Jones?
Is this the appropriate place to ask kind of what the circumstances were surrounding the chase?
I think you can ask that now.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer it. It was a vehicle pursuit on just a regular vehicle stop here in Republic, out on O'Neal in Kansas, and the person decided they didn't want to be stopped and were pursued all the way through Springfield, through town of Springfield, or city of Springfield, streets multiple times, attempts to spike strip to get the vehicle to stop, and they avoided that. Turns out, the person was wanted by alcohol, tobacco, and firearms for federal violations, a major criminal, and we were able to, with the assistance of Springfield and Green County, actually make the arrest at the location of the collision. That was out at I-44 in Glenstone. So actually, I got an email from the alcohol and tobacco firearms special agent in charge here in Springfield that they had been looking for this person for a long while. We weren't looking for him, we were just making a vehicle stop and happened to be, it was a stolen, by the way, it was a stolen vehicle, too, I forgot to mention that.
They didn't have insurance. They didn't have insurance.
No, no. Yeah, this was, that's why I don't like being in front of you on this topic. This is not one that, you know, I like coming back to the council and saying, sorry, we wrecked a 2016 car. You know, I mean, we've reviewed internally the collision. Certainly, there's some procedures in terms of distance from cars and things that we can learn from the incident, but I'll be real frank with you, the way the vehicle spun out off-road and turned around and literally spun and came at our vehicle, so we hit head on, it was a unique circumstance.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Jones. Any other questions for Chief Law? No other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Before we get on with the financial report, I would like to take this opportunity to thank council. I want to appreciate everything you guys do. You all bring a unique perspective to council, and I just appreciate everything you guys do, so I just want to let you guys know that. So Brandon Self showed that today with the insurance knowledge, and Charlie bring a lot of stuff, too, and Mrs. Cool, and Mr. Wilson, you've got your fingers on the pulse of Republics. I appreciate you guys, and Mr. Jones, your business sense, I appreciate that, too. Thank you, guys, for serving on council. On to the financial report. Mr. Brown.
Good evening. I believe everyone's received three particular reports that I provided for the board. I apologize for my voice, but the weather changed yesterday, my voice didn't. It's not keeping up with the weather. What you have that I've provided you is basically the cash and investment report as of January 31st, 2017. Because of me coming in as the interim finance director, we were a little slow on some of these things. We have got January out, we're almost finished with February, so you should be up to having current financial statements fairly quickly. Cash and investment report, there's also a budget and actual report, which is about 60 or 70 pages long. I'm sure you've read every one of the pages, but if there are any questions or items in there that you'd like to go through or talk about, I'd be glad to. I've also provided you with a sales tax schedule. You've been provided a sales tax schedule in the past, which basically was provided having the current month reported to you being the one that was for the period a month or two ago. As far as sales tax is concerned, the business pays it one month to the state, the state gets it the next month, and then the following month, they turn around and remit it to you. So you've got a three-month spread as far as sales tax. Some of that gets a little confusing as far as what you're talking about and what you're comparing things to. I like to do apples, apples and oranges, oranges, so to speak, and so I went ahead and redid the schedule where it is only on collections. It basically shows you what you collected last year, same date as far as 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, so that you have a good comparison of exactly what was collected in your month. And so it's a little different than the schedule maybe that you've seen before. So I'd briefly like to go over those three schedules that I did provide to you. The first one would be the cash and investment schedule. To highlight it, basically, your cash and investments as of January 31st, 2017, total $12.5 million. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but you have to remember that really, a lot of that money is tied up in other issues. Of that 12.5 million, you have 3.7 million that's specific for the funds that you have as far as street fund, water, sewer, fire, things like that. You've got another 3.5 million that's really designated, the board had decided that they wanted to set aside certain dollars for capital improvements or equipment or whatever. Then we have, you know, total 3.6 million that's really restricted by law or ordinance that can't be touched because of your bonds or utility deposits, that's not spendable cash. So overall, you've got only about 1.8 million of that 12.000 million that you can use, and that's really for the general fund operations. Having a budget of around $7.4 million in the general fund as far as your budget for the expenses this year, your 1.8 million would only take you about three and a half, four months. So it's a good 24, 25% fund balance. You wouldn't want to get a lot lower than that. So you're in good shape, but you're not, you know, as far as going out and doing a lot of major projects, that's something that, you know, it's not a good time for that. Did you have a question?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So just, was you here for Jared's discussion regarding the financial, the sales tax?
No.
Okay, so that would coincide with that discussion with availability, the 1.8 million, if someone was to ask, can we use that money to fund those other projects, that comment, that would just help solidify what Jared presented to us in our work session. So I just want to draw attention to that, that all those projects we're talking about, that 1.8 million is needed for our operating cash.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I do think that there was an effort to go and reevaluate those board designated accounts to see exactly what those were. Some of those have been around for quite a while. And like I said, if you've got, if you've got all your other assets that are tied up that really can't be used for operations, that limits what you can do. As far as the sales tax report that we talked about just a little bit ago, I would like to say that as far as the dollars received, we already know what January, February, March are. I only presented you a financial statement for January, but if I take the three months of sales tax, which I've got the bank statement, so I can tell you what you've collected, you collected 1.4 million in sales tax for the first quarter of 2017. As far as comparing that to the prior years, that's about 0.6, about half a percent more than you received a year ago, which is good. Any improvement in sales tax is great. So really, 1.4 million received there, and as far as the budget for 2017, that quarter, you received about 25%, so you're right in line with what you'd budget as far as sales tax for this year.
Councilor Self.
A question, like, I see in January that we have an increase of like 39%, but then in March, we have a swing of a negative 25, almost 26%. Anything attribute to why here and then...
You can look back, you can look at 2016 and see the same thing. It's really a matter of just when the money gets paid to the state and when the state gives it to you. It was good to see, yes, we had a large increase there, but then you saw, you know, I went to the city administrator and the assistant administrator and said, look at this decrease you had in the third month. But when we went back through 2014, 15, 16, and 17, it really was consistent. You're really close, it's just a matter of when the state gets the money and when they send it to you. So having a 0.6 increase was great considering the big decrease that we had in March.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? On the financial report?
I would like one other thing.
Certainly.
I believe this is my last board meeting with you, because I think they found my replacement. So anyway, I want to thank you for allowing me to serve the city. I have a wonderful time, you know, the last two months going through and working here. You've got a really wonderful group of people, you've got some talented professionals here. I really like the way that you're moving forward. I like the things that, I've been in several EM meetings with the department heads and with the city administrator and assistant administrator, and I think it's really good, it's a really good positive move, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the changes that are going to come about. I live close here, and I'll be watching, so thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Brown. I can attest to this. I come in here during the day, Mr. Brown's over there, he's working dillies away. I wave at him, he's like... So we appreciate your dedication and your service to the city, sir.
Thank you.
It was greatly appreciated. With that, I need a motion and a second on the financial report to accept.
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? And that motion carries 6-0. On to reports from staff, I'm going to start this time with Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Larry, I appreciate your work. I think that you came in, I think, one, Jared did an outstanding job of researching and looking and vetting and looking for someone to come in and do this work, and I think we absolutely hit a home run with the work that you've done. I would say that it might be your last meeting, more so, because I look forward to you continuing to work in assisting with the transition with the new finance director, but I do appreciate the work that you've provided and the links that you go to to explain it, because when I saw the first sales tax number of that decline, I about fell out of my chair, but going back and looking at it, I appreciate the work that you've provided. It is very extensive. Cleaning that up and explaining, I think that's been one of the issues that I wanted this council to see, was the more understandable numbers that you could see how the money could and could not be used. When you look down there and see 12.5, 12.6 million dollars, does not mean that's money to go out and be spent or pledged to build other projects. And so I appreciate the work and all the time you put in and resources you provided us and answers you provided us. So thank you, but I still anticipate that we'll be calling on you for the transitional phase. With that, Debbie Parks, as we've mentioned, has been hired to be our new finance director. She'll be coming to us from OTO, and I look forward to her starting next Monday, March 27th, but again, I look forward to, with the transition, working that in and working with Larry and understanding the financial position and how we operate and trying to get some more ideas. And I look forward to her fresh ideas as to how to move and make it more, communicate our message a little bit more clear, long-term. And I've added this, April 22nd is the citywide cleanup. We've talked about it a lot tonight, I appreciate the residents speaking on behalf of that issue. I don't care how many times we've got to share it on Facebook, whatever, Twitter, call the news leader, call KY3, KSPR, this is, I think this is a very big issue and an issue that we need to take a lot of priority for our community, because I do think we need to take a lot of pride in what the community looks like. And this is a shot, an opportunity, and I appreciate Republic Services to participate with us in the first one. This is not just a ho-hum, let's go do it, let's get serious about getting out there and helping. If you run into a citizen or an individual that is elderly, cannot get their materials, encourage them to contact the city. We will talk to, we'll try to work with our code enforcement, which we do this now with other nonprofits, groups, churches, events that could get up and help people get things to the curb. It is a community event, and I just, I would highly emphasize trying to get the word out. So we'll try to find other mechanisms to do that as well, just to stress the importance of it, but I appreciate the work at least getting that out. But April 22nd, we'll continue to talk about it, discuss it. Jared, thanks for the work session tonight on the sales tax, and that will be coming up on the next council meeting agenda for your consideration. Auditors from KPM were in last week, so that was good to see them in here, they had four folks lined up. It's kind of demented to say, a little way, it was nice just to see four of them in here working and going to town and pulling receipts and looking at different things that we have going on in the city to see a very robust attempt and look into our financials, because that, I mean, we talked about transparency and the understanding of where our financial position is, and I think KPM's going to do us an outstanding job. I have an important announcement. David and I met with MODOT today and related to a rail safety study, and it's called, what was it called? At grade crossings in the community, but the study will begin from Republic through Aurora, so basically what they provided us was a chart, was the number of accidents and the number of fatalities along that route. And so they're going to begin to do a study. At current, there's only two crossings that are included in the Republic portion of the study, which was West Avenue and O'Neal Road slash Miller Road. Our initial comment, and I appreciate David's participation, which you may be hiding behind the wall, but we need to extend that all the way to MM, and so what they had asked, and they said that they were open to extending that study to MM, or yeah, to MM, looking at a potential overpass. OTO is looking at a potential overpass at MM. And so the other thing we addressed was, if you're interested in the safety of the community and the safety of the crossings, the train speeds are crazy. And so I think that the railroad and MODOT are taking this pretty serious, given the number of events and the statistics they provided us today. So what they've also offered and what they're going to do, so on April 11th, we established this today in the meeting, April 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00, Community Center, MODOT and the consulting engineers will be conducting a public meeting to receive public comment. So if you notice somebody with the school, we'll be contacting the school district, because this is something that's very, goes right in between two schools, between the schools, the train speeds, increasing the study to go further. Any of those comments that you can add in the public comment, bring up the train speeds, if that's a concern to you, bring up the train speeds, if there is a concern.
So you're saying the train speeds are a concern?
They're crazy.
What time is this meeting?
It's from 6:00 to 8:00. They're just, they're fast.
They're erratic, they're slow or fast, or they either stop or they're...
But everything that you can bring up from the noise, when they sound, they ask us to bring up all of it, so, but, you know, come out to that meeting, or if not, put your comments in writing, we can submit those, we'll find you, we have the web address or the email address, we can submit the comments in writing. But that's an important meeting for our community, because they are looking at what to do with those crossings, and it could include closing crossings. So it's important that you get out and communicate your concerns, what you could see, so again, April 11th, 6 to 8, Community Center, and...
Randy, can you send that out to council again?
That's OTO.
And we'll put that out on the, we'll do a press release on that as well, and, no, it's MODOT.
MODOT.
We'll do a press release on that as well, we'll also put that on our social media account. And associated with that will be a traffic count, so when you see those little black cables around town, again, drive over them as fast as you can, as many times as you can. Seriously. But MODOT would like to include bus routes and all of our predominant public safety routes, so at least those two routes. So we need to talk to the Brooklyn Fire District and, what are you talking about?
We want to go over those slow but not fast.
I want that sign moved downtown. I think it tells how fast. So... I think it tells how fast, so, probably takes a picture, too. So, but anyway, the, the, the public safety routes need to be established from both our fire, police, and I know because, uh, Brookline has a fire district, it's important that we engage them, because they may use those same routes, and, and discuss that with them, how that's affected. So we'll, we'll be inviting a number of members to go out to that public meeting, and, uh, I know my daughter's not watching, but I'm, I've, I've got to commend her, they just played in the national tournament in Billings, Montana, and today's her birthday, so I want to have a birthday to my daughter, and congratulations to her, a great season, even though she's not watching, but she better be watching, so, that's all I have.
And, and Chief, that, uh, the mobile unit does not take pictures, that's correct, right?
Only if you're a car, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
No, sir.
Tough act to follow, isn't it? Okay.
On the, on the, we're gonna announce the time that they'll be doing that.
I'm sorry?
On this, uh, trash thing. When will they decide what hours that they'll be traveling the streets picking up?
It's in, uh, in the flyer.
It'd be in the flyer, it'll be on, it'll be established by the ti, it'll be their normal trash pickup day, and it'll be the time that their trash is normally being picked up.
Oh.
It's just one single day, Saturday.
It's just Saturday.
See, then I missed it completely. See, I need to read the newsletter, which I haven't seen a copy.
It says the 22nd.
Seven days.
Cleanup, and that's a, that's a Saturday.
I don't know what day it is now.
[laughing]
I was confused.
Citizens must have their simple items in the curb, know later that 7 a.m. the morning of Saturday, the 22nd of April for pickup.
I wouldn't provide a minute.
Well, I don't have that.
Should, should be in your packet?
Yeah.
Under exhibit L, the very last page, under exhibit L?
I guess I'll have to relook my packet.
Okay.
You, too.
I'm not by myself thinking that.
Very good. Okay, moving right along, on to future community events. Ms. Mayfield?
Jared, hi.
Jared, hi.